Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I welcome you to the first regular town council meeting of the town of Sunnyvale for August. Would you please join me standing for the invitation to be given by council member.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and strengthen the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord, as we make decisions that will affect the citizens and residents of Sunnyvale. And continue to remind us that all that we do today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, the greater glory of you, and for the service of our community. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in standing as we pray the allegiance of life. I pray the allegiance of life, the United States of America, under the Republic of San Francisco, one nation, not a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. At this time, let me call to order the regular town council meeting of town of Sunnyvale for Monday, August 13, 2018. For the record, we have four council members present, out of seven. Councilman Wade, Mr. Higgin, Mr. Clark, and Mayor. And councilmembers absent are Mr. Finch and Mr. Allen. We expect Mr. McNeele to join us a little later. We still have a council meeting at that time. So we have called, so let me, I'm calling the council meeting to order at this time. This first item is a public forum. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time you may approach the council and talk about items of interest other than personal matters or matters of litigation. So if anyone would like to come forward and talk to the council, you may do so at this time. Good evening, Mr. Thomas. Would you stay tuned to my address for me?
Good day. I'm Walt Thomas, 477 East Fort Road. For the record, Mr. Mayor and Town Council come before you tonight on behalf of Sunnyvale Baptist Church. We, the veterans in the church have asked me to assist them in procuring a flagpole for the church. And everything went well for the church. Everybody is on board. But looking into the code, existing code, we ran into a little bit of an obstacle. And height of flagpoles, non-residential flagpoles, I think is, needs to be reviewed. And I don't know if you could top your head, know what that is, but just correct me if I'm wrong, Charles or Leslie, but the residential flagpole height is allowed 25 feet. Non-residential flagpole height, you might be surprised, is 20 feet. I've done an informal, unscientific survey of the town. And my conclusion is that no non-residential flag in town would be allowed today if it were to be. None of them meet that criteria. My opinion, it's too stringent of a criteria. Flagpoles in front of town hall are higher than that. Flagpoles in front of our schools are higher than that. Every other place that I saw in town is higher than that. And I think it's, my opinion, kind of unreasonable height restriction to be placed on our non-residential flagpoles. Of course, I could have come forward with various, asked or requested various. Since I don't know BOA before, if this were to come before me and be a BOA, I would probably turn it down because there's nothing unusual creating hardship. It's just that it's, that's what the code is. So I'm asking for, I've talked with Charles a little bit, and Leslie also, and I don't know if they were just trying to get me out of the office, but they think they agree, maybe they thought that he looked at it. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And we would certainly like to rectify a pole there in front of our church. And one thing, as I indicated, all those schools, high school is, best I can get with a thumb measurement, is about 35 feet. I think there's some others in town up to that height. We will, the school will be running into this issue with their new immediate, intermediate schools that's now being built. And I'm sure they're going something higher than 20 feet up there. So I do think we are a very patriotic town. And I think we want to encourage flying of flags and flying high. So I'm sure there is some maximum height that we would want to consider, but 20 foot just doesn't seem like the right height. So I hope we can erect our flagpole in the near future. Don't know when that'll be, but I hope you'll give it consideration if you might, if all that.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. It's always good to see you. And again, you did the right thing by approaching staff.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to let Mr. Thomas know that you are correct. We were trying to get you out of the office. This item is according to Rashad will be on P and Z next month and on the council agenda in October. For discussion.
Excellent. Thank you. Good evening, Mrs. Taylor.
Hi, ladies at Karen Hill 442, Armsbridge Road. I'd like to talk about Cypress Cove. It does not involve Sunnyvale completely, but it does because it is adjacent to us. I learned today that the D.R. Horton has won their lawsuit against City of Dallas for disannexation from the City of Dallas. So now it is an unincorporated portion of land in Dallas County. They had filed applications with the state to build, excuse me, a wastewater treatment facility. Apparently with the thought process of emptying it into Lake Ray Hubbard. No one quite sure how anybody could think that was sensible, but anyway, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of it. And I know that after watching the City of Garland's work session, they are going to be asking some questions. And I think that we would probably like to be at that same table just to stay informed more than anything. So City of Garland did kind of hint that they'd just rather us take on all the problems than them, but since we know we don't, and can't take on the project. It's 300 acres and they're proposing 1,000 houses with no commercial or retail included in it. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of it and see what we can do. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam.
Mayor, may I have a comment?
Yes.
If you haven't had a chance to listen to the Garland work session, I might encourage you to do so. I think it was very enlightening. Certainly some points were made that we probably need to remember. This option come before us. If you don't have access to it, I can provide you the workshop link.
Put on mine, please.
Yeah, I think it's pretty important to stay informed on this because Sunnyvale is mentioned several times in the workshop. And you need to, so I'll provide a link to that shortly.
Thank you, Mayor Prochnow. Your next. Okay, now this is coming forward. So I want to endorse the public forum at this time. I think we have a new employee. We will introduce her. That'd be, and off to you. Sriracha.
Mayor and council, today Darby O'Brien started. Darby is from Forney, where she graduated from North Forney High School in 2015. She has customer service experience and cash handling experience. And we are excited and happy to have her on board. Darby.
Darby, we welcome you to town of Sunnyvale. Glad you're here. Moving on to consent agenda items, we have five consent agenda items today. There is one, first one is a minutes of special town council meeting for July 9, 2018. Then there's a revised meeting minute for the regular town council meeting for July 9, 2018. There was one change. There's a minutes of special town council meeting for July 30, 2018. Four, to discuss and consider resolution 18-12, a resolution of the town council of town of Sunnyvale approving the entry into a health services contract with the Dallas County Department of Health and Human Services concerning the town of Sunnyvale's participation with the county of Dallas in establishing coordinated health services for the town, operating certain health services for the residents of the town to promote the effectiveness of local public health programs, to participate in providing public health services for the residents of the town, and to further the public purpose and benefit the citizens of the county as a whole. Item number five is discuss and consider resolution 18-13, a resolution of the town council of the town of Sunnyvale approving the entry into of an agreement with the Dallas County on behalf of Dallas County Health and Human Services concerning the provision of certain food establishment inspection and environmental health services to the town of Sunnyvale. Would anyone like to remove any of the consent agenda items?
Mayor, I assume the heading of this consent agenda items, 1 through 3, revision of 1 through 5?
That's good.
You better note changes can I have a motion to approve consent agenda items 1 through 5?
So many.
What's the main time, Mr. Higgin? The second.
The second.
Second by Mr. Clark to approve consent agenda items 1 through 5. Are there any, or in terms of the motion specified, or opposed, motion passed 4-0? Moving on to discussion and action items. Item number six, that's the development services. That's the application from Drew Donoski. Sorry if I did wrong, apologize. Claymore Engineering, I told about for southeast corner of US Highway 80 and South Collins Road, Highway 352. The request is for site plan, medical, Rashad.
Mayor and council, such a property is located within the Long Creek Crossing MPD site, specifically lot 5. The site plan calls for the development of a 21,000 square foot single-story masonry building with articulated facade with seven public entries. Based on our staff review, the proposed site plan adheres to the Long Creek Crossing development standards. Staff will note that this will be the second development within Long Creek Crossing. We already have approved the Chick-fil-A site on lot 1. So this is the floor lot that's showing the site plan on the visual there. Upon review, staff notes that again, the building height will adhere to the MPD standards. The MPD allows for a maximum height of 35 feet. The building will be 19 and a half feet. The exterior facade will be primarily cladded with the brick and stone facade colors in adherence with the MPD and in line with our state, I mean our town color palette. Articulated facades as required. And I will note that staff has requested a five-foot sidewalk extension noting that the, along the front half of the lot, noting that Chick-fil-A showed a sidewalk extension on their lot. And as you go down along Collins, moving north, this lot will actually, of course, occur and eventually tie into the future trail system on the east side. And that was the intent for requesting that sidewalk. The future intent for that connection to be made when that trail is developed. The lighting standards have been met and in adherence with the MPD. And that landscape means with sign requirements. Currently, the site plan only shows a sign shown on the facade, signs shown on the facade. But any sign must adhere to the MPD when it is submitted at a later date. We should likely be doing the building permit process. P and Z recommended approval of this site plan is submitted with a minor comment of a landscape be included around the trash area, which is a problem of the MPD. Other than that, staff has put forward.
Rashad, you said a staff memo, I didn't see the staff memo. Is that one given to the applicant?
The staff memo?
Yeah, with the additional items to be addressed. Are there additional items to be added?
Yes, yes, he's aware. And my only opinion item was the minor comment as far as the landscaping around the trash receptacle area. But other than that, there's no other comments.
So they have the, they have the report?
Yes, yes, sir.
Counsel question for Mr. Jackson.
I think with this property, we were talking about changing the requirements for the lighting. Did that ever come up?
No.
Okay, I was, I was on the church.
Okay, yes, that's further, further east as you go along the highway. That was something that was dealing with our special area requirements for highway construction development. This in itself has its own PD. So there's a specific light required for each lot in this PD. And they have submitted and planned to adhere with that light requirement.
This is a program.
Right, okay. And so also, it sounds like you're going to have one sign, but so generally signs of this property, how high can they be? Just the high requirement for this MPD?
The MPD allows for a maximum height of 40 feet.
40 feet?
40 feet, pollen-style sign. There's a specific design for this development. The MPD calls for, stipulates that there are a total of seven, 40-foot signs that could be allowed. Prior to this MPD being in place, this was owned general business, which would have allowed for a pollant sign of 25 feet. Will you propose a renovation from that?
Additional questions for Mr. Jackson? Happy to receive. Good evening.
Good evening.
Did you say to name and address in North Philip, the yellow plate, if you don't want to drop it off at the entrance, that's the box on there?
Yes, sir. My name is Wes Johnston. I live at 9220 Larchwood Drive in Dallas.
Dr. Mr. Johnson.
I'm with Midcore Partners. We're the developer on the project. Drew Donoski is our civil engineer, and I think he was engaged this evening. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Can you talk about the project a little bit?
Sure. So our facility is a 21,900 square foot medical office building. Our anchor tenant is a gentleman named Dr. Fowler. He's an internal medicine physician. He's currently located down the road here in Sunnyvale, but he's relocating to our facility. Our secondary tenant is a group called Envision Radiology. They perform MRIs and imaging services for patients. The balance of our space is not fully leased, but we are looking at partnering with a physical therapy group. So those are the tenants that we expect at this time.
Do you ask if there are any problems with completely leasing out the facility or?
No, sir. We don't. We've had pretty strong interest so far. And had a lot of folks in C V here to be in this area. Don't need to spread any issues there.
Counsel question for the applicant. Rashad, you have an answer, please?
Just a side note, I will say that our economic development director, who generally assists with parks maintenance, has worked with the Stone Canyon, HOA, in regards to, going back up. Each one of these lots are required to have trees along the front. The MPD allowed for the trees to be located on the visual here in lot 6. Based on the number that would be located on that lot, it'd be very hard to maintain and use that lot. And it's a concern from our parks director. And so we're trying to figure out a compromise with or not. It could be fee and lieu with some of the trees located there. But when we finalize a decision, we will present that to town council. That's my understanding. But right now, I think there would be an issue with the long-term maintenance of that area with over 40, I believe, 42 trees on that lot.
Rashad, I'd back you up in that 100%. I think though, rather than our making a termination replacement, and I'm sure you're going down this road, I'd like to see a landscape architect involved with placement of those trees as well as fee and place of, you know, let's do it right. Because it is a highly sensitive area. And I think if we got a landscape architect involved, then he could help further provide the proper screening as well as, you know. I don't remember, were they going to irrigate this or?
Well, that's part of the issue.
And that's part of the issue, was it? Well, and I know you guys took a job of trying to go through it. And I know the parks director has been years, he's been involved with it. He's very attuned to that. Actually, you know, I worked in the same office, and I was on the landscape side many years back. And when I read the 40 trees order, the numbers were in the packet of one. So good thing you don't stand on top of the things.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, additional discussions on this topic? If not, can I have a motion for the application from Drew Donoski, Claymore Engineering for the property located, I told about southeast corner of US Highway 80 and South Collins Road, Highway 352, for a site plan, medical?
Some moved, subject to town contents that are currently outstanding, but order my permission.
Motion made by Mr. Higgin to approve the application. Who have a second? Motion made by Mr. Higgin to approve the application from Drew Donoski, Claymore Engineering, subject to satisfactory completion of all staff comments. And the motion was seconded by Mr. Wade. Everyone heard the motion, all favor, signify. Or opposed, motion passed 4-0. Thank you, gentlemen. And I appreciate being here. Counsel, moving on to town secretary portion of the agenda. This is to discuss and consider placing an ordinance adopting a tax rate on the agenda for first reading on Monday, August 27, 2018, and for second reading and final adoption on Monday, September 10, 2018. Sriracha?
Mayor and council, when a proposed rate exceeds the rollback rate or the effective rate, whichever is lower, the taxing unit's governing body must vote to place a proposal to adopt the rate on the agenda of a future meeting as an action item. The vote must be recorded, and the proposal must specify desired rate. A taxing unit cannot vote to adopt a proposal increase to taxes by an unspecified amount.
So here, even though the taxes, the rate is going to be less than previous year, but we still need to, is contrast an increase? Is that the line rate?
That's correct. And staff recommends placing a proposal to adopt a tax rate of 0.412900 on the agenda for the first reading for Monday, August 27, and second reading and adoption on Monday, September 10.
Counsel, any questions or discussions on this? If not, can I have a motion to place, to approve an ordinance adopting a tax rate on the agenda for first reading on Monday, August 27, 2018, and for second reading for final adoption Monday, September 10, 2018? And the, but the total tax rate would be 0.412900. We have motion made by Mr. Higgin, seconded by Mr. Clark to approve the ordinance adopting the tax rate and adopting a tax rate on the agenda for the first reading on Monday, August 27, and second reading and final adoption on Monday, September 10. Everyone heard the pushing, all favor, signify. Or opposed, motion passed 4-0. Counsel, we have quickly come into the end of this very meeting. But last item is, mayor and council request for future staff updates and agenda items.
Mayor, I have a couple of things. One, just what the future plans are for striping the roads that have been resurfaced right now, or resurfaced earlier this year. Right now, most of them that I'm aware of, and I happen to live on one of them, has got what I call posted note lane markers. Because that's what they are. And vehicles coming from the west, coming toward my house have a line of sight issue that just because we resurfaced around that line of sight issue didn't go away. So, and I've seen the man who has got the insurance.
Running for the bike ticket. I've actually gotten that Dallas County Public Works, they've given us a bid on it. And now just, I've got a small issue that I'm working out with them right now. Because they've got two of the roads that are B roads, part is E roads. So I've got to, I've just got to make sure that we get the, get it in line with getting B roads. So that's, that's all we're waiting on. Then it'll come to council, for council approval.
Awesome. Thank you, John.
Second thing, and I brought this up in the opening meeting last Monday night when we were discussing the budget. And I don't know how, I know some notes were probably made, but I think we really need to look at this. And that is what the potential payback is. You know, it's very few times that the town gets into a situation where we can get a payback by doing something. And wastewater, the, now we've got the metering stations in for the wastewater flowing into Garland. And we know we've got one line that's running at 260% of flow rate. There's a payback associated with that, and I'd like some type of analysis. You know, the metering stations, I know that there was a problem in trying to get certifiable results. I think, again, Johnny was working with Garland on getting that. But I would think by now, after a year of install and tweaking and all that sort of good stuff, we should be able to begin to get, depending on how much it rains, we should be able to get some idea of how much money we can start saving if we would fix the infrastructure that we don't see. So I'd like some kind of type of a feedback on that. Because that's, there's a $200,000 budget item that we allow for that actually may not be, it won't literally cost us $200,000 because we can save $200,000 if we would, because we're not, we don't have that cash outflow of Garland. So if we So if we can get some idea of what that picture looks like, not next week or not in two weeks because I know it's going to take some time, but here pretty soon because we spent a lot of money putting those metering stations.
Some sort of prioritized sequence on how, what to fix and what to fix?
Yeah, yeah.
I got it.
I mean, we have no idea how much it costs, how much money. I'm sure staff knows, whoever writes the checks, Liz probably knows, number ten, knows how much we pay Garland, depending again on how much it rains, because there's no additional flow if it doesn't rain. But if it rains, we're having to pay excess, well, why should we be paying that? Can we just not take that excess and apply it to putting in and fixing the lamps? That's one of those weird situations in government that you never have an opportunity to offset a cost. We're always looking to do this, do this, do this. That's a scenario, though, where we can offset a cost by just fixing what needs to be fixed.
Makes sense. Thank you, Mr. Seaton. Additional requests for staff?
Can we get an update on the roundabouts and just what the statuses, and then also on the U D O plan? Can we get updates? Next question.
I want to speak for staff. I think they are, they're going to come back with us, with the schedule in the near future.
So Collins Road discussion, we have scheduled for August twenty-seventh. The U D O currently, right now, I think we have three U D O amendments in progress, so we're trying to get those, and that includes the flagpole, accessory structures. So we have at least three U D O amendments that are going on right now that were, that were immediate needs that we're trying to get addressed. So we've heard you, we haven't forgot about the U D O plan, but we had some things that we really felt like y'all were directing us to touch on immediately. So we are, we are making progress, it's just.
Taking time.
Taking time.
Got it. They're doing right, you guys do the right thing. Thanks for the schedule. Thank you. Initial request for staff? Okay, counsel, it's done. That's the end of the regular council agenda items. So can I have a motion to recess into executive session pursuant to chapter five fifty-one, chapter D of the Texas Department of Commerce? There are two items on the executive session. That is, section five fifty-one point oh seven one consultation with the attorney, and B, section five fifty-one, that oh seven four personal night, personal night, town manager.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Dornoski. Second by Mr. Way to recess into executive session pursuant to chapter five fifty-four, ever made the motion? All have been significantly signed? All opposed? Motion passed, four-zero. Counsel, we are in executive session at seven thirty. Twenty-one, we are out of the executive session and back on open session at eight twenty-one P M. For the record, council, my name joins us at seven fifty-six P M. We'll move to item number nine on the agenda, that is to consult any official action I can perform that as a result of the executive session. No, there are no actions to be taken. With that, now I move to the last item on the business for tonight, which is a gentleman, and we will do so at eight twenty-one. Good night.